Item 5.9, the five-year district library plan up to item number 5.15. And with that, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda with changes announced?
Oh, wait.
Second? With the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Please stand for the reasons.
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one public comment tonight, so Tim, whenever you're ready. Yep, please.
Just got a couple of things here, nothing pressing, but we're doing a building study now. Is it a building study or is it a geographical, more of an outlying study with the outlying parameters of the districts, I guess? My thing is, I keep hearing that, I've watched a couple of the joint meetings, and it sounds like Mr. Green is kind of, I don't know, pushing just for a building study. I think we need to do a complete study, the surrounding areas.
So, real quick, we did meet with the consultants today, and it will be on the agenda, which we will talk to. One of the questions we did ask is, are they going to look at district foundries and sensitivity as to where in proximity people live? And that is something they are going to review as part of the study.
Good, great, that'd be great, yeah, okay. Another thing, if we were to have the school in Greenwood, I know you guys have no idea where the schools are, I understand that, but if this, you take, let's say, the high school, middle school to Greenwood, you are going to lose probably fifty, sixty kids from Loyola, because the majority of the people work in Marshallville. I don't think they're going to take their kids to Greenwood, come back and work in Marshallville. I mean, if we lose fifty, sixty kids, that's a half million plus in revenue. And if you're not thinking you won't pass a referendum now, if we stay independent, you're not going to pass a referendum if it goes up that high. And I don't know where the savings will be if we don't close down at least one building. We can't keep all three of them, I don't, in my perspective. I keep saying "we" because I'm a part of it too, I mean, I feel I am, because this is the big thing. I just want you to keep in mind, if that referendum, you know, when the joint comes up, if it's up even five dollars, if it even passed, and my fear is, once you lose these kids, they ain't coming back. If they don't come back, we're going to lose both schools. I can see it, it may not be in our time, but we're going to lose both schools. I fear that. We need to do this smart, we need to do it, I think, where, I mean, we are the bigger school, nothing against Greenwood, but there's nothing, there's nothing west of Greenwood for businesses, big businesses, kind of generally coming this way, I feel. We don't want to lose both, we don't want to lose one school, we definitely don't want to lose both schools. So, that's just my thoughts on it. Take it around for what it's worth.
Just some simple clarification before we get to the agenda topic tonight. I was extremely impressed with the consultants today, and they have ideas and plans for community involvement throughout this whole study, where you're going to be a perfect candidate for an opportunity to talk to the consultants, because ultimately what they said today is, the plan that is put in place isn't going to be by the boards, it's going to be by what they've heard from the public.
Okay.
And, well, when we get to that point, I'm really excited about what I learned today, actually.
Good. I think we really need to do a geographical study. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Moving to consent agenda items, as we've done in the previous meetings, I'd look for approval of the minutes of the October board meeting, the approval of the policy committee meeting on October 27th, and the approval of the November 3 special joint board meeting minutes, all as one. Tom makes that motion. Second by Crystal, all those in favor? And it's approved. Financial reports?
Okay, balances are as of October 31st, 2025, in the general fund balance, we have eight hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Capital projects balance is thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-four cents, and checking balance is five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, twenty-three dollars and forty cents.
Any questions on the financial reports? Hearing none, motion to approve.
Almost.
Nikki with Matt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New business, 5.1, presentations. Who would you like to go first? Who would like to go first? Don't all stand up. Are you going to do the whole thing in Spanish?
Well, I wish. We were going to, but we wanted you guys to.
I appreciate that.
Okay. I'm Anna Wolf, and we're here to tell you about our trip to Panama this June. So, we're all going to say a little bit about each day. The first day, I'll start. After we got there, met our host families, because we all stayed in a house with a Spanish speaker, little English spoken, so that was pretty cool, actually. First day, got up, had breakfast with, in our host family. Were taken to the school where we met every day. I believe, first we went shopping. They gave us a list of items in Spanish, and we were tasked with finding them. They were all for an orphanage that we would later visit a few days, like cleaning supplies, baby food, just things like, that they asked for or needed. We then got on a bus, we had, we were with another school, like six kids, and we had a shared bus every day. We went to the Panama Canal, saw the locks where the ships go in and are lowered, and then, that was pretty cool, very hot. Before that, we did watch a movie about how it was built, what it all took, a lot, like, just the history, it was very interesting. Then every night, we went back home for supper with our host families. Then we skip, I skipped to the last day, because this was personally my favorite. We took about an hour bus ride to what seemed like the middle of nowhere, met these indigenous people that took us in wooden canoes with motors on the back, but wooden canoes. We hopped in, down this massive river in between these huge mountains. I swear, I feel like I was supposed to be on a National Geographic show. It was amazing. So then we stopped, hiked a little bit into this waterfall, and we got to hop in and swim, and it was just the most incredible thing I've ever seen. They then took us back out down the river some more to their indigenous village. They gave us a tour, showed us how they basically make everything at this village to live, their clothes, medicine. They gave us these little things and said, lick it. And all of our tongues went numb. And so, they, you take, they make their own medicine for when they have, like, accidents and they need to perform surgeries to make them numb. And then they also gave us plants to put lipstick on, sauce fond, especially for Ben, who's not here, but the only guy that was on the trip, had some lipstick. Yeah, and then, we ate their fish, fruit, things that they eat every day. And then they gave us non-permanent tattoos on our hands, which were really cool. They lasted for about a week afterwards, and then we danced in big circles with all these people, it was amazing. That was my favorite. The second day, the second day, we went ziplining. So, there were about seven lines, and every line, it got like, either steeper or it was like farther. And the craziest part was the waterfall, they stopped us halfway through the line, if you wanted, but they stopped you halfway through, and then you could like turn to the side, and there was like a big waterfall, and it was pretty cool. And then at every stop, there was like workers helping us, like, get through and stuff. And then after, we stopped in the, a traditional market where they had like, we tried water right out of a coconut, and then we, there was like homemade bags, crafts, they tried to buy us, like sell us everything, and then fresh fruits from all over.
Who are you?
Anna Wolf.
Hi, I'm Julia Reeves, and I have the names, we went to Casco Viejo. So, we basically toured the city, and they have this really big metropolitan cathedral of, Salik of Santa Maria, the ancient oldest church in Panama. And it's this really big gorgeous church, and they have the, what they call the golden altar, so it's made, just a giant altar, all gold, and they have all the history there. And we walked through the town, and it was super cool. And then we went shopping, and we had a picnic there after we got there.
I'm like a library. Like I said, we went and we got groceries for the orphanage, and later in the week, we went and brought them to them. There was different age groups, they were split by age, like groups one, ages one to four, five to six, seven to eight. We initially spent, I initially spent time with the younger kids, and we like played with toys, building blocks, and then I helped feed them. And then, again, we all played volleyball in a big group, and then we went to the beach a different day, and we got to enjoy a nice relaxing day on the beach, where we swam both the ocean and the pool. We played toss with a beach ball, we had plenty of fun to share in the loft of those memories.
I'm Anna Chrisly, and on our last day, which was probably more of my favorite day, we traveled out to something called the Monkey Island and the Sloths, the Sloth Sanctuary. And at the Monkey Island, we all got in these boats, and we traveled to a bunch of little different islands where they would kind of just crash right up on the shore, and they would give us like grapes and other fruits, and we would hold them out in our hands, and the monkeys would jump off the island, climb on our boats, and like come take the stuff straight out of our hands. So, we had to see a bunch of different species like that. And then one time, they would, just the whole time, the people driving the boats just have the best eyes ever, I would want to take them hunting with me, because I don't see much, but... So, they would drive, and they would just be able to point out everything that I would never have been able to see. And like, one time, we went in this, was it an Iguana? It's the largest Iguana, only Iguana I've ever seen, jumped on my boat, and even the guides are like, oh, this has never happened, we don't really know how to get it off. So, we were stuck there for a little bit. And then we also went to the Sloth Sanctuary, and it was a butterfly farm, and we went through, and saw the different butterflies native, and a bunch of different kinds of frogs, and the sloths, they say they like, they rehabilitate them, and then they'll bring them to wild, but some of them just come back on their own and try to join back in. And then later that day, we went to salsa dance lessons, which was in a downtown, like, skyscraper building, where this lady taught us how to do all the different traditional dances. And then, our last, like, final night there, we all went out to eat at this fancy restaurant, and like, they would bring up people, and they'd like, where are you guys from, where he is from? And they'd ask a bunch of groups, and then you would go up in front of everyone and have to like dance, and it was just kind of a big old dance.
So, really, we're here to tell you what we did, but also to say thank you for approving the trip and giving us this amazing experience. We're so grateful, and we hope that you improve future trips, because this is by far the greatest thing I've ever done, all of us probably, and we really appreciate it, so, thank you.
Thank you. I got a couple of questions. Panama Canal, how many times did they hire someone to get that accomplished?
I don't know, I could tell you a lot of people died.
You know how long it took?
A long time.
I watched it for a special on PBS. Was it, I don't know, Theodore? Or Franklin?
It was a Roosevelt.
Six years? I think it took four different people to do it. Yeah. All right, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. FSFA, do you guys want to go now?
Yep.
Yep.
I'm still waiting for my fruit.
I'll see what you guys say.
So, I'm Mallory Jacoby, and this is Summer Smith, and we're some officers on the FSFA team this year, and we're going to talk about some community service projects that we are planning on doing, or have done. We planned them during our officer retreat this summer, and, yeah. Okay, so first, we were asked by SOLES to participate in trunk retreating this year. It was a very good turnout, we had around five volunteers who helped hand out candy direct traffic, and decorated Mallory's trunk to look like a farm. The next thing we did was, the chapter went to the cemetery to clean it up a little bit before Veterans Day. So, we went to the St. Anthony Cemetery, and we had eighteen volunteers who either like weed whacked around the stones, picked up debris, or just fixed flowers. We also, this past weekend, went to the Clark County Humane Society, we had about fifteen of our members, and we got to play with the dogs and puppies, and we helped learn how they care for them by watering, feeding, help cleaning up the pens. And then, this afternoon, right after school, we had a few members help with, we made some tie blankets, and we're going to donate them to the Mayo Clinic for cancer patients.
Colter Reed. All right, hi, I'm Colter Reed. This last month, I got the chance to attend the National Epiphany Convention Expo in Indianapolis, Indiana. While we were there, we got to tour three different places. Jalsperson sod, where we went and learned how sod was farmed and how they retail it. And then McNamara Florist, where we seen how they arrange flowers. And then, the Exotic Feline Rescue Center, where they, we learned wildlife specialists took care of lions and tigers. And then we also got to attend sessions where we learned, or where we got to see people get award, get awards, and then we got to listen to speakers. And we also got a career expo where there was businesses in different colleges, we could get free things and sign up. And then, this convention really helped me grow as a leader and learned, and I got to, and I was excited to see what I got back, my goodness, I was excited to bring what I got to learn and bring back to my chapter.
Questions, anyone?
I wanted Colter to address the fact that we have a state officer this year, but he didn't want to like add that in on the fly, I was hoping that one of them would talk about it. But we do have a current state officer, so Parker Smith, graduated from last year, is serving as the Wisconsin Epiphany State Association's Vice President this year, and so that's been a really cool experience for our members, because I feel like it's a really big motivation to see someone serving at the state level, and they've got to go to a lot of workshops that he's facilitated, and that's just really cool to see like a leader produced from, from our chapter and see him in that capacity. And then, thank you for all of you that bought fruit from our Epiphany members, we had a really successful fruit sale. And then, the only other thing I wanted to mention while I was here was that we have to, or we get to host our sectional leadership development event, and if any of you would like to be judges, please let me know, because we're always looking for judges for all our events, because we need three for each event, and that ends up being quite a few community members. So, if anyone would like to be a judge, please let me know. One day for everyone. March 2nd, I believe, it should be a Monday. If you don't mind. It starts right after school, and depending if you're a lucky person, you might get done early, or it might go until like 7:00, if it's a long contest. But we give you all the materials ahead of time in the rubric, so that you know what to expect, and I'm thinking of it on the fly. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for supporting our state chapter.
Well, next on the agenda, 5.15, the five-year district library plan.
I guess I can clear a room with my chair. Do you have it on your screen, or do you need a bigger copy?
I'd take a bigger copy.
So, the library is required by the administrative code, it is a state statute that we need to have a five-year library plan. So, my goal is to present the plan to you tonight, and I would hope that you would approve it, so that we can submit it to DPI tomorrow, or soon. Our funding for the library is part of this code, so we have to make sure that we are in compliance with the code moving forward. So, the library mission statement, to inspire a lifelong love of reading and to ensure that each and every student learns effectively. We achieve this by providing equitable access to diverse resources, fostering skills in the ethical and efficient use of information, and integrating technology to support curiosity, critical thinking, and creativity in a dynamic learning environment. So, I've listed some of our resources, the links are there. I've included our strategic plan, as it is currently posted on the website. Everything that the library does needs to connect back to the school. So, I based the report on the Future Ready Framework. You can see the different wheels, but everything is student-centered. So, curriculum instruction, assessment, personalized professional learning, robust infrastructure, budget resources, community partnerships, data privacy, collaboration learning, and use of time and space, those all come back to the kids being at the center. So, I picked out four goals that focus on some of those wheels. The first page is just kind of an overview of the goals. So, if you flip to where it actually says Goal 1, and it has the Tribute Pursuit Wedges. The first goal is fostering a love of reading and learning. Currently, we are working with the Title I department, they've sponsored a mystery sort of program this year, and we have highlighted that in the library, and we have seen increased use of the kids. Jamie has set up a display, and kids will come in and say, hey, I need a new mystery book, oh, they're over here, or have you tried this one? So, that has been very successful for us. Moving forward, we want to continue to work with Title I on their themes, their next theme will be science fiction, and space, and nonfiction. So, again, we'll set up displays, we'll encourage kids to follow through on that love of learning. We are also hosting the Read Battle of the Books teams this year. I'm not sure if we have a middle school team, but we definitely have a high school team, and we have a lot of interest in a elementary squad, so we might even have to do a in-house competition first. So, Battle of the Books is you read thirty books or so, and then you compete and answer questions with schools from out the state. It's a virtual competition, but you compete and see if you can answer the questions. This is the first year that we've ever had a team, so I'm really excited. Again, I'm working with Pam Smith on instilling that love of learning. We had to pull out our Battle of the Book books, because the kids wanted them so badly, and Mrs. Wolf was putting them on hold, and she lost track, she was like, they are right here, whatever I have is in that spot, but you have to just get lucky that it's here today, because we had so much participation. So, the state competition is in February. In my program, I have really engaging read-alouts. I choose picture books to read to K-5, but they are about famous people, maybe when they were younger, they have engaging pictures, they have engaging vocabulary, they all connect back to a common core standard, and I want to continue to do that. I think the kids really get excited. I read a book called Tech, and it actually looks like a little iPad, and it's a caveman who his tech dies, and his world kind of ends. That book has been circulating for about three months, because the kids are so excited to read it. So, we do also help with the staff connection for Book Bingo. When the Book Bingo comes out, staff members will come in and say, hey, I need a book that fits four hundred pages, that's my topic of the day. So, I talked about the future goals of continuing to work with Title I. I've also established a relationship with the new public library director, so we're looking forward to do some fun things with our kids down there. She'd like to come in and perhaps do a recycled book bay, so you take a T-shirt and you make it into a book bay, and then she would like to run some sort of competition, if you bring your book bay to the public library, so I'm looking forward to that partnership as well. So, Goal Number Two is maintaining a diverse and accessible collection. The biggest goal in this section is, I want to do a diversity audit. I really want to dig in to our collection, and I want to make sure that we have all of the cultures represented, and I want to make sure that we have authors that are relevant, that our content is current and up to date. So, that will be a big project on my end, but our software program is very helpful in doing it, but I really want to dig in, and then I want to spend a lot of our, twenty percent of our funds, to make sure that I have adequate diverse collection. This year, we have SORA, which is audiobooks and ebooks, so I have to roll this out a little bit, we need to work on some PR, so that the kids know we have it, but they can read anywhere, anytime with these audiobooks and electronic books. So, I'm really, really excited that we have SORA. We used to have Overdrive, and it was fine, but SORA is kind of the next thing geared towards kids. And all of our Overdrive accounts rolled in to SORA, they're sister companies. So, now we have more access, and we pay into the state system, so the state, the kids have access to more books, because they're using a wider variety of things. Goal Number Three is to encourage digital citizenship and media across all grade levels. I think we are very blessed to have Christine Guyer as a computer literacy teacher, and I know that she covers these things, K-5. I get a little nervous in the middle school, high school, because I know that we've taught it to them, but when I see them working on research reports or doing anything with a device, I still worry about citing their sources correctly and being a user of the information. Just because you can take a picture off the internet, doesn't mean that you should. So, as a goal for that, I would really like to see some digital skills carried through into the middle school and high school, really enforcing the academic honesty policy, and as those situations come up, I could be a resource for those things as well. And then, Number Four is being a resource for professional learning. I want to help the staff in the school in any way that I can. I have a strong professional library collection. As we learn about new things in the world of education, I try to purchase books on them, AI, project-based learning, whatever the staff really needs from me, but I don't know that the staff give me very much feedback. So, I would love to have them come to me with what they need, maybe by creating an actual survey. I know the staff do not want to fill out another survey, so that's one of the barriers, but I want to make sure that our collection reflects what the staff needs as much as what the students need. Lots of the services that we subscribe to, SORA, Discovery Education, they all offer professional development, but sometimes it's hard to get it scheduled and to get people to come to a library session, but I hear it a lot. I didn't know the library had that. So, part of that is marketing on my fault, but it is also, I need to make sure people know that we have these great resources, and I need to train them how to use it, so that we are getting the most beneficial... so that we are getting the most beneficial out of those programs. So do you have any questions on the library plan? I would like to make it a two-year plan where we review it in the odd years. I think if we review it every two years, we will always be in compliance because I'll date it for five. But I also feel a two-year plan makes it more useful. Traditionally, in the past, this plan would be created. It would be approved. It would be put on a binder, and we would dust it off five years later. I would really like this to be an active living plan that we can change and adapt so that it is really meeting the requirement, but doing what it's meant to do and helping our staff and students.
You had talked about the academic honesty policy.
Yeah.
In regards to AI and AI kind of changing everything and the chat, APTs. How, in your role, is that monitored? How do you see that all fitting in with this?
At the high school level, I don't see it at all, and it scares me a lot. I am taking an AI course. It's about thirty-six hours of videos and reflection that I'm just choosing to do, actually for my public library certification, but it all rolls together. And the amount of information that is available is crazy. And the goods and bads of that is amazing. There's a little help from AI in this report. But I'm afraid of the kids that don't know how to use it correctly. And I don't know how to fix that, especially on a part-time schedule where I don't see high school kids at all. But I'm afraid that our high school kids are using it, and it is a huge time saver. But I'm afraid where we draw that line of, is it yours? And you tweaked it?
Right. Are you becoming too dependent on it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
There are some educational AI tools that we are exploring, which is great. But the kids still use chat a lot. My daughter is a college sophomore, senior right now, and some of her assignments actually are said, run it through chat before you submit it to me. So I'm her mom, and she gets kind of mad at me. Mom, the assignment said I had to use chat. I'm like, okay, but can you run it through Goblin Tools too to see if it's the same answer? So I need to do some more. I know, I know AI and I know what it does, but Travis and I maybe need to do some ways to make sure that our kids know just because you can doesn't mean you should. But it is a huge time saver, but I do worry about the plagiarism piece. And if we wanted to make that a bigger priority goal, we definitely could because it's, it's not going away.
Right.
But our kids need to know how to function in an adult world, in a job that will require them to use it in a respectful, responsible way.
If I may ask, once you complete that course, if you could maybe report back?
Sure.
Find our recommendations?
Yes.
And then it gives all of us and teachers included, you know, some guidance as to how to approach AI and the use of it.
I am way in the deep end now. I'm designing a business plan, complete with marketing and graphics and all the things. And that's wonderful. It's not what I need right now, although I do have some marketing to work on. But it is really digging in deep to the demographics of what AI can do. And sometimes it just scares me. And I've noticed that my computer acts a little differently now after I've done some of these searches. And that part makes me kind of nervous too. There's just a lot to think about. But it is the world that we are using, and we have to use it respectfully. Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you for putting this together for us.
You're welcome.
I do like your idea of a two-year living document.
Yeah, agreed. So I'll come back in twenty seconds. It would also be great to have a committee to help with this a little bit.
Elaborate on that a little bit.
Yeah.
What do you mean? What do you mean, like a committee to help implement?
Yes, because I see my library. I see my library, and I know my library really, really well. I don't get into the high school English class. I know elementary fairly well, but I've never seen the middle school history class. So what I need is in the plan. But I would really love to know what the school needs in the plan as well.
We'll definitely look into that.
Thank you.
Are we taking action on this?
Yes.
Please.
Okay. If there's no further questions, I would like to make a motion to approve the library plan for two years as presented.
Motion made.
Wait, sorry. Yeah, let's approve it for five, please.
Review it too.
I would try that motion, maybe one.
Sorry. Nope, okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve the library plan for five years as presented and reviewed in two.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the varsity baseball coach.
So tonight, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So tonight, we are going to make the recommendation to hire Dean Bogdanovich as our next varsity baseball coach.
Dean coached baseball here before.
He was part of the program last year as an assistant coach.
What?
He did years ago.
Yeah.
I don't think he was the head coach. I think he was assistant. Yeah.
And then he's also in the basketball program too. So he's coached quite a few sports for us in the past.
Any questions on Dean being hired as the varsity baseball coach? Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion. Correct, Dean.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. JV girls' basketball coach.
Yeah, so the reason that this is back on the agenda tonight is because at the last meeting, I believe, or maybe the meeting before, we had approved Mark Reeth to be the JV girls' assistant. And he is no longer able to do JV girls' basketball. So tonight, we'd like to recommend Logan Folwiler as our JV girls' basketball coach.
I'll make the motion to approve Logan as JV girls' basketball coach.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Special education paraprofessional and daycare assistant.
I'm going to recommend the approval of hiring Stephen Arch as a special ed para and Destiny Blank for the part-time daycare assistant.
Just to clarify, Mr. and Mrs. Special Ed Para position, that's been posted for a while, right? This is?
Yes.
Okay.
So we've had a couple of students move in that this is why this was, I think it's been open for a while, but I think the need was continuous
Yep.
because of the amount of move-ins that we've had. So that the need was there.
I'll make that motion to approve Stephen Arch for special ed paraprofessional and Destiny Blank as daycare assistant.
Motion's been made. Any second?
Oh, second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the 2025-26 property insurance renewal.
So Eve and I met with Jesse Furd, our rep, company that we've been with for many, many years.
Jesse is who was here last year, probably gave us the sales pitch?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So last year, it stayed the same. This year, there is a $5,000 increase. It's moving from eighty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-two to eighty-seven, four sixty-four. Couple reasons for that. We added a building in the concession stand. We added a vehicle. The prices of everything have increased. So my recommendation would be to stay, stay with this company at least through next November so we know what's going to happen from there. I would probably recommend until twenty-eight, July of twenty-eight. But I would definitely recommend them for this next year, for this year. Eve, do you have anything else? We do get a, what would you say, a kickback?
Well, we get one of the workers' comp, you know, part of that back. And then we do get a dividend back, which last year, on eighty-two thousand, the total was six thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. We got back.
So it was really seventy-five thousand, nine hundred.
So I would assume we would probably get slightly more back this year unless we haven't made a claim or something.
Yeah.
Which hopefully we will not.
Yep, I'm going to take a motion.
I'll make a motion for one more year with?
EMC.
EMC. Enters court for the 25-26 school year.
Motion's been made?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Spring elections.
Go ahead.
The notice for spring election was put out today. It's in the paper today. Derek and Tom Levine are up for reelection next year. So that's been posted. If either of you are not intending on running again, then please let me know by December twenty-sixth. Otherwise, we have to extend that date by another three days. Anyone else that wants to run has until January sixth. But if you guys don't let us know by December twenty-sixth that you're not running, then we have to extend that. So if anyone isn't, let me know. If not, then I'll send you the bill of report.
So and the positions are Derek is city of Loyal, and Tom is area south of Highway ninety-eight. So those are the two positions. Okay? So just clarification.
Strategic plan.
All right. So I said the committee was going to meet. Then the committee did not meet yet. All right, so we will meet. We do not have a report for tonight, but we will meet here early December, and we will make sure that we have something for the board on our next meeting. Okay? Been a lot of things going on in the last three weeks. So my motion.
Whole grade sharing.
Okay. Sunday night, the board and myself went down to Granton and had a joint meeting with Granton and talked, just talked in general how we can work together. Talked and had a discussion of whole grades sharing. Whole grade sharing is very new to people, to districts. Couple things that we are, what we discussed was whole grade sharing between the two of us with seventh through twelfth, ninth through twelve. And just had a discussion about it. And a couple of things that came up. They are going to meet, new Granton is meeting with Greenwood tonight, and then Nielsville next Monday or Tuesday, correct? Same thing, same talking about whole grade sharing and some other thing, or how they can work together. After looking up from DPI where whole grade sharing is, so this is fairly new. If there, if we are looking at doing this, we are meeting again December first with Granton in a joint meeting. A couple of things that need to be done. The agreement has to be signed and approved by February fifteen to do it for the 26-27 school year. And it has to have a resolution sixty days prior to that. So with the resolution, in talking with Bob Buckner from WASB, that is a very similar resolution we talked about with consolidation. It is a statement saying that we are going to enter whole grade sharing, and then we need to explain or list what we're looking for, what grades. All right? Following state statute one eighteen point five zero. So, so there is, there is a time crunch. Granton had a special board meeting last night. They just kind of went over their finances and talked about operational referendum, talked about whole grade sharing with about forty-five or fifty people there. So I think they're exploring. I do believe they are going to listen. They had some feedback at the meeting, and they are, they are listening to what their constituents, community members are responding to them. So they are throwing out stuff at them as of today already. They've got quite a bit of response. So we will see what's, what the next week brings, and we will talk more on December first. So I don't know how in-depth we want to go, or if you guys want to say anything about whole grade sharing. It is new. There is a possible bill out there that is being, or has been introduced to the education committee to help fund this with $500 per student for every year that you're doing this. It's an annual thing, so you do it for one school year. Then you would do the same thing, February fifteenth or December seventeenth or eighteenth. You would up it, or resolution, February fifteenth, renew it. So that, that determines what's going to happen the following year. And I believe DPI is pretty stringent on their time. They will not give any extensions. So if it doesn't happen by February fifteenth or December seventeenth, it will not happen for next year. So any questions or any comments?
I think the one thing I would add is if the boards between Loyal and Granton entered into this agreement, we would then negotiate the whole grade sharing contract. And that's where the, that's where the agreement comes into play. And you can negotiate things like price per student, essentially. And that's where the negotiations take place. None of the negotiations have started. Monday was an exploratory meeting. And again, Granton had a meeting last night and has officially looked at their numbers, and they're going to have to meet again. So we are a long ways from negotiating, but this could take place in a relatively fast manner. But there is benefits. And one other clarification, this is Granton students coming to Loyal. This would not be vice versa. The whole grade sharing would take place from Granton bringing their kids to Loyal. And then the negotiation would take place from there. So I think that's an important thing.
One thing that I would just want to add to is that when meeting with the Granton board and just having the conversations, we have to remember that we're, we're also talking about students here. We're talking about, so yes, we're talking about money and dollars and things like that. But these are high school, potentially high school students who this might be a sensitive area for them in the sense that, you know, where are they going to go next year? You know, and I just hope that as a community in Loyal, if the negotiations happen between Loyal and Granton, that we can work something out and that they feel comfortable and welcome coming to our building. Because at the end of the day, they are students, and they deserve to have an education just like our Loyal students do. So I know this is financially driven, but at the end of the day, I just want to keep in mind that these are kids, families. And hopefully, if we do come to a resolution or agreement, that we can welcome them into our district with open arms and that they feel welcome here if that's the case, if that's what needs to happen.
So you talk about, it is about money, but this is the future of our communities. We hope that they stick around here. So I think the whole intention is how can we work together? How can we help each other? And this came up. So, you know, like I said, it's relatively new. Looked a little research in Iowa. So that's where Wisconsin got, or DPI got a lot of their information and kind of modeled from the Iowa model.
Has never been done in the state of Wisconsin.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, so extremely new.
So we are, I believe, are one of the first that are looking at it.
Anything else, miss anything from the meeting? I thought the meeting was, was good. I enjoyed the conversation.
Yeah, I just think with this, we've put more opportunities for the kids. I mean, it's gotta be a win financially for both school districts for it to go and we know it should be a win for the kids, you know, welcoming with open arms.
Anything else on that?
You?
Five point eight, discussion of possible action on the Neola policies.
So Policy Committee met with Todd Antony, he is Neola's rep, our rep for Neola. He came in and, I don't know if you have it in your board docs, you probably do. What was updated that day already? What we're looking for or what the committee is recommending is that we approve those updates. With that, he will be back in maybe January to give us a second round of updates. And then I believe he and I and Mr. Green are going to sit down and take a look at employee handbooks and, and student handbooks and see how we can work together on that. But each, each would still be their districts, their own districts, employee and student handbook. But there are very, there's many similarities that we could utilize and put that to rest, but there are some differences that we would keep to each district's own handbook. Any other thing there?
The main thing on, on the update was just a lot of legal law changes and different in the wording, like a newer dictionary.
So.
So we would only need one reading of this, no, we don't.
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions on the policy updates? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Kirk makes the motion? Second by ma'am. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, motion carries. Joint School Board Meeting, Joint Board Meeting with Greenwood on November twelfth.
Okay, just reporting a little bit on that. Both boards approved the hiring of Myron and HSR to do the study, facility study, we've called it, I think it's more than that, but we'll call it the facility study. Today, we had.
Kickoff.
Kickoff, kickoff meeting with, with them and kind of a core team of Derek, myself, Brad Graffender, our facilities, maintenance supervisor, and then Mr. Green, Jamie Gardner, and their Joel Suda and Shane Rasmus and their, their maintenance guys that are in control of their two buildings. So I thought it was a very good meeting. They had, they had everyone there plus one that was at the interview, so they had six people there today, correct? Six, all right. Very thorough, just kind of laid out what, what it looked like for the next, their goal is to be done in, in April. By, okay. So laid things out, responded to questions that were at the interview. Just that this is a, a major study and like Derek said, Tim really talked about population areas, location, where people live, bus routes, and kind of got into some information that now we have to go back and get that information to them. But really stressed community engagement, a task force or ad hoc, I mean however you want to say it, that would be involved in, in where this would go. So, and be a major part of that, and that's what they talked about in our interview with them, was that community engagement. And it was really community driven on how, how the plan was going to kind of be. And we also talked about, hey, one, the first year might be this and it might phase into other things for the first three, four, or five years. So to be the most efficient that we possibly can. They did take a quick tour of Greenwood's facilities, they've been in our facility, know for the most part what it's, what it's about. They will be sending engineers to thoroughly go through all the buildings. I would say probably in December when we have break and, and pinnacle from there. But they contacted us the day after they were approved and, and said, let's move, let's get this going. So I think, I think we made a very good choice and excited for, for the opportunity to work with them some more. You got anything on today's meeting?
Yeah, I can't say enough how impressed I was today. On Friday, I had actually emailed Joe and Chris five questions that I had worries about for the study. And I was telling Kirk when I got here tonight, they did not know those questions and they answered all five of them during the meeting today. I was very impressed by that, very professional, clearly they've done this before. At our next joint board meeting, they are gonna spend an hour with both boards together and talk about what they call the, the engagement model. And they're gonna work on that over the next fifteen days or so and they're gonna kind of lay out how they see this plan going. They were very timeline driven and we'll all get this, but they, they worked it back from that August one deadline of when they want to have this, this process to us, ready to go, April one, sorry. And they, they asked a lot of questions about his history, history of both districts, when did consolidation start, when did we talk about it, what has worked, what hasn't worked? Sports, teachers, it was impressive. Even on the side of the buildings, the reason why they're gonna do these tours when the students aren't here is because they're gonna use a three D scanner and come in and scan every room. And then the measurements are one hundred percent accurate. So, but even from just a facility standpoint, they are gonna be looking outside of facilities. They wanted the addresses of all the current district, all the kids in each district and that'll be a map that they can create. It's, again, I was extremely impressed today.
So I'll ask you, I sent you some questions, I asked them during the thing, and I guess I call it a comprehensive plan, meaning I want to see the entire plan together as far as, you said, population densities, geographical areas of things, you know, that thing. You said you were very impressed and that's, we had.
Those were the questions that came up, they brought it to us or said, hey, this is, this came up at the interview, all right? So we are going to extensively look at everything that has been brought up to us.
And that's, I'm asking you, you felt the same way today with that, that's, I felt good, we were leading on timeline for them and it was, we didn't give them much time, we didn't have a whole lot of time. We tried to ask a lot of questions, we didn't spend time, but there was so much information that when they answered, there was a lot, yeah, 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 but we didn't really get in depth on some, but that's why I wanted to ask you, you felt when you announced them, you were gonna follow through those.
I was very impressed today.
So moving on from the meeting, Branding Committee, reported. Do you want to take a check down?
Sure. I'll just give a little recap on the Branding Committee. This information was shared, some of it was shared last week at the joint meeting as well. I think there was a little bit of concerns today regarding some of the information, so I really want to do my best to clarify some of that information. So Eliza Rusik and I, she's the Greenwood Board Member, we are overseeing the Branding Committee. This committee is made up of about fourteen community members, equal representation from both Greenwood and West. We met on the third of November for our initial meeting and Eliza and I came up with an agenda that just kind of highlighted what the purpose of the committee was and what we were hoping to achieve. The purpose of this committee is to come up with a new identity for a potential consolidated district. So our job on the board is to come up with this plan and take to the public next summer and included in that plan, we want to have a name and a mascot colors. So we have some identity for this plan. The committee talked about mission statements and core values of both districts and are looking at ways to put that together for a unified mission statement and core values in the event that the binding question in November does pass. We also talked as a committee about how it's important to engage the community in this process. So we want to make sure that everyone feels like their ideas are heard, valued, and considered. So the committee collectively agreed to gather as many ideas as we possibly could. So this included sending out an email to all middle school and high school students with a link where they could submit their ideas, all staff at both schools. There will be a flyer going home with the elementary students at both districts where parents or whoever in the house can sniff off the bottom and send back their idea to the offices. Facebook posts in both districts, information on websites, I believe a remind message was sent out tonight, right? Where you can enter your information, all asking.
I gotta put a link on it, they said the link, I just got remind saying.
Saying it went out.
We did.
They fixed it. Okay. So the link is.
Thank you very much.
The link is now live. So what happens with that link or all of those ideas, it goes to an email address that Eliza and I have access to. So we're the only people that do and then the, the program itself where the survey is being taken puts all of the ideas into an Excel spreadsheet on its own, which is really awesome and time-saving for us. So I just wanted to also remind you that all the ideas must be submitted by January fifth and then as a committee, we're gonna compile these lists, bring them back together. January seventh, we meet again and we're just gonna determine how we're gonna narrow it down and what that process looks like. I just want to reiterate that this information is being gathered by the committee, so everybody has a chance to come up with a name. This information needs to be put into the plan prior to next summer. So our jobs as, as the board and as this committee is to come up with a plan and that's what the, the non-binding vote told us to do, so that's what we're doing. So I hope that people continue to submit their ideas, to last time I checked today, we had about a hundred ideas already today, lots of creative ones. And we will, as a committee, look forward to going through those and then after that meeting in January, kind of decide, all right, what's next for you guys? How are we going to get the community, the community to narrow this down or what that looks like? We're not quite sure yet, but stay tuned for more information regarding that and we look forward to hearing your ideas.
Thank you. Also, we have like a committee business partnership that took a couple of tours of Whitehall, which is, has really changed their, I shouldn't say changed it, yes, they changed their tech ed or moved their traditional tech ed to Blair Taylor with their teacher. And they have developed a more of an emerging technology type of a tech ed. So what I mean by that is SolidWorks, a lot of AutoCAD, drones, robots, and they're in a four-school consortium with three others that it was, it was good, very good. And I think what this committee is, is basically taking things and seeing what's out there and trying to develop something here with, with our, with our consolidation collaboration. So our kids have some opportunities just like that. And instead of having two, two districts as a right now, buying the same equipment and let's, let's share, let's, let's, that's part of the efficiency, let's see what we can do. Tom, did you, did you want to talk anything more about that?
So we'll be, we'll also be coming together with businesses to get some ideas on what, what they're looking for to help in that regard. And we'll have more concrete information at the next joint meeting and what the plans are moving forward so that we have some, you know, further information to be part of the plan going forward.
Yes. So Eliza Rusik was on the, on the trip also, did put together, would you say PowerPoint or video? So I will, we can share that with you. And we also had a group of elementary, higher elementary, middle school teachers go to Whitehall and sit in their middle school, higher elementary classes where they are, they do not like to use the word AI. They like to use the word emerging technologies where they sat in and looked at math and ELA and how they're, how they're teaching it. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you want to say anything.
Sure.
Okay.
So right now, they are doing grades two through middle school, so eighth grade, all with personalized learning, where they're using programs similar to our IXL that we use for intervention. So kids are able to go on there and either be challenged, if they're able to complete grade level standards and complete and challenge themselves without an end in sight. So not everybody's sitting and getting the same information. Where on the other side, if a kid is struggling with content, this program will go back to what they need. So if it's basic math facts versus multiplication and division, it is geared towards their level of learning. What we noticed and saw was they had a menu, they called it a math menu. So on this math menu, there was six stations and the teacher basically had a must-do, which was this personalized learning program. Again, similar to IXL, it's, I think it's called Alex there if I recall. And there was also some may do's. So they would do two fifteen-minute or three twenty-minute time limits, depending on their timeframe that they had available. Students had a choice of what they wanted to do at that time. The teacher would, let's say, one of the may do's was flashcards and she would work with individuals at that station while kids worked independently on a computer program. That would basically teach them their math skills. So it was interesting. We have some second grade and our fourth grade teachers have dabbled, kind of looking at what that possibly could look like for math in reflection with their English or ELA teacher. They felt it was a little bit more of a challenge right now to do personalized learning with that, because they also have CKLA. So they're learning too as they go. So it's interesting, the teachers were really excited. I guess my big takeaway was talking to a veteran teacher after thirty years that was super excited and really wanting to just like, she felt refreshed and revived to teach science and social studies in a way she always wanted to. So she was able to take the big ideas from CKLA, regenerate it, make big projects that the students weren't part of and so it was just interesting, it was good.
So the big thing that we get out of this, and Mike Bagley came and talked and you, for some it isn't, some look at it like, oh, you're, you're replacing the teacher and that's not it. But Mike Bagley talked, he's a superhead at Whitehall, just really reinforced the engagement piece of the students. He said, it is unreal on what is, I want, we watched those kids come into the tech ed facility, which was unbelievable, you'll see it on the video, I'll share it with you. It was, it was, they would come in and, not just Whitehall kids, it's three other districts, they just come in, it was more of a tech school. Come in with their backpacks, sit down, some would go over the drones, start working on it, some would work on robots, others went into AutoCAD, it was, and they just went to work, there was no screwing around, it was, and that's what he said, giving in the, in the elementary and that. So I think it was a very good exploration, kind of an eye-opener for some or most. I believe we are going to try to, Aliva Strum does some very similar things, we're working on maybe taking some, some teachers to that, that facility also. We also saw Aliva Strum's Cardinal Manufacturing, which was very interesting and just more hands-on learning. So this week, we got together with Sheila Nyberg, County Economics, and how can we move forward and where do we go? And we, we got some wheels rolling, talking to some tech schools, because it just doesn't seem like our tech schools want to work together. So getting more information, talking to them and getting a list of some businesses that we can invite to a, to a sit-down with. Kind of narrow some pathways of what's important here in our, in our two communities or our surrounding areas of pathways. Obviously agriculture, you talk about transportation, truck driving and mechanics and all that, health, food service. So there's a lot of things that we have kind of taken a look at and how can we maybe narrow down and tackle one of them or, or something like that. So there's some movement. Sheila is very excited about it. So that's a report on that. Also, the both boards agreed or approved to continue leaving the livestreaming up on the website. Websites. Website? YouTube?
It's still on.
Alright, whatever. Leaving it on online up through the election in November of 2026. And then that can be discussed again from there. So they are available, correct? You said?
Yep.
They are available at this time. So the next meeting is? December 10th. 7:30 in Greenwood. We will have the.
Myron meeting.
Myron and HSR meeting before that, 6:30, so 6:30 to 7:30, that'll be.
So we will not be doing a closed session then?
6:30 is open.
Correct.
To the public.
Myron will be, yep, correct. So the meeting starts at 6:30.
6:30 in Greenwood.
Yep. For the Myron Engagement Model Discussion.
Okay. Anything else on, anyone else have anything else on that aspect? So there is a lot going on. I'll save it for my report.
Alright, other business.
Principal's report.
So early November, we had Mike Evans here. If you recall, that is the gentleman that is assisting us with our HRS framework. He met with our leadership team and just really laid out what our projected plan is long-term. Looking at whether or not we renew this contract. And if we do not, what does that look like in order to maintain momentum forward as a leadership team? Creating that safe environment for staff and students, having a viable curriculum, and then proceeding on to make sure everything is aligned with a school, with a system that is working in place. So he was here, met the team, met us, gave us some tips on what to do, talk about in classrooms and what to look for that follows our model of instruction, so he was here and got some good feedback. Our Veterans Day program was on November 11th, where we honored all our veterans. I wanted to just do a big shout out to Ms. Lebal for putting that together for her first year. She did a really great job. I know it's super stressful and it takes a lot of people to put things in place, and she did a great job. We honored Joshua Schmitz, and Connie Meyer was our guest speaker who did a really wonderful job highlighting all the great things about Josh. And our students were great. We had elementary kids singing, high school kids singing and playing in the band. It was just a nice representation of all levels of kids, so everybody did a really, really great job. Chris is going to highlight this, but we did get our state report card, and I just kind of wanted to highlight some of the big positives that we have going on within the district. So right now, the district as well as each individual building, so elementary, middle, and high school meets expectations. You'll hear later on, but they realigned how they evaluated the schools. So anything that has happened in the past, you cannot compare to this year's because it's different. As was last year's, so more details to come. But three great things that we're doing is we really don't have any absenteeism problems. Kids are coming to school, it's a very small fraction of kids that are not here. We have a high graduation rate, pretty close to near to the top, so that is great. We are making sure all kids are prepared to be leaving. And the last highlight we have is post-secondary preparation. So kids are coming out of our district career and college-ready. And a lot of this information is coming from, are they taking MTC credits? Are they getting on-job work release hours, those kind of things all play into that. So we read it really high. An area of growth, which is always going to be happening, is working on closing academic gaps. So kids that are struggling with learning, making sure that they're getting all the interventions and attention that they need. So that is one of our areas of focus going forward.
At the elementary, we want to give some shout-outs to our October TBIS Golden Ticket winners. So they earn golden tickets and specials classes by being respectful, responsible, safe, and/or a learner. And then all those golden tickets go into a live drawing, so these students were selected for the month of October. So congratulations to Leslie Frederick, Ellie Barlow, Greta Glebke, Aubrey Casperson, Nola Clements, and Zachariah Weber.
We had our Scholastic Book Fair, which I'm sure if you are parents, you know that that book fair, it brings in a lot of fun and excitement. So that was highly attended. Ms. Hiding and Ms. Wolf did an awesome job promoting it and having kids come in and just being super excited. Cisa came in, did some STEM activities with some of our gifted and talented students. That was working with Ms. Geiger and Ms. Guyer. They seemed to have a really good time with that, so big shout-out to them.
Sure, and then middle school, high school. So here are our October PBIS winners. So for middle school, our best effort and most improved, we had a tie between Ellie Atkins and Anna Waldhauser. Our loyal proud student of the month is Axel Kind, and our overall student of the month is Kat Smith. For high school, our best effort, most improved is Daniela Morelles. Our loyal proud student of the month is Eddie Wolf, and then our student of the month is Jacob Schmidt. Next thing we can talk about are our football all-conference award winners. At our last meeting, these were not released yet, so just wanted to say congratulations to the following athletes. In the defensive positions, Jake Lufterhand was second-team defensive line. Isaac Zabel was honorable mention defensive back. Adam Kautzer was honorable mention linebacker. And Reed Stiglitz was honorable mention defensive back. On the offensive side of the ball, congratulations to Kane Tofar for being second-team all-conference tight end. Colton Sandalier, second-team all-conference running back. Jackson Meyer, honorable mention lineman. Zach Kind, honorable mention lineman, and then Jake Litner, honorable mention at quarterback.
If you guys all know, our One Act Play is going to state, they will perform on Friday. So they did a community program for us here on Sunday. They performed for our middle school and high school students and did a really great job. So we wish them luck as they perform for state here on Friday. Tomorrow is the last day of the try, so on Friday, that means no students are in the building, but staff will be working on professional development that our own colleagues here in the building are putting on for each other. So we had 12 staff members volunteer to put on some great things that they know and feel comfortable sharing. So anything from Canva to AI, to working with Google, to working with students with dyslexia, to accommodations. So we have a wide array. Oh, I forgot, Holocaust and App30. So we have a lot of staff participating. Each session is about 45 minutes, and we have on average 30 staff at a time. So the morning is going to be filled with a lot of collaboration and learning from each other, so that's pretty exciting. Monday and Tuesday, and next week, we have a short week, and then we have no school Wednesday through Friday due to the Thanksgiving break. So hope to see everybody at school.
And then Tri-Vestor II does start on the 24th, so next Monday. All good?
Yeah.
Super support.
Okay, I would like to congratulate all our students that received some type of award academically most improved for this month. Good luck to our One Act Play on the state performance on Friday afternoon. Talk real quickly about state report cards. So Mrs. Comersberg touched on it. Admin team is going to sit down with Wendy Nelson. Team will go through it with us and kind of take it apart and get, show us where, since it's changed, where, how that affected us and where our strengths are and where we need to work on. Alright, and then we have, our goal is to have a feedback to the board in our December meeting, so. Had a hot water heater go down on us in the boiler room that serviced our middle school and high school, so that was replaced last week. We've had some steam wet issues, mainly with piping, not with steam traps. So in about three or four, five rooms where we've developed leaks, I will pass this on afterwards. And you can see the wall here compared to the wall here. Alrighty, so that'll be something that we will take a look at, alright, and we're kind of working on. Our generator, our main generator that is used for emergencies for lighting is done by the boiler, okay?
Yeah, I do.
No. Went down on us as some change oil, and it was a nice black or brown. It was a white colored, so changed oil a little bit, looks at some issue. So we are working on doing something with that, alrighty. E-Gaming slash sports had a very good season, did very well. And they ended up in the tournament and lost first round, so congratulations to them.
They're going to talk at the tent. They're going to give a presentation at the joint meeting.
And then the winter season for esports starts right after Thanksgiving break.
The whole offseason after that?
They got their rest, they'll get two weeks. I had something else.
We were at E-Gaming. You were at E-Game Sports?
No, yeah, I was. So I would say last week, Saturday, not this past week, two weeks ago, got a text from a WSB rep and wanted to call me, talk to me a little bit about, they have some, a couple consolidation laws that they were introducing, and wanted to pick my brain about it. So we talked a little bit, lo and behold, Tuesday morning, Ms. Green and myself, we're heading down to the Capitol to talk in front of the Education Committee on three bills that are dealing with consolidation that are being introduced, introduced in that committee meeting. We had our testimony to talk about it, and just basically everything we've talked about up to this point. One is $2,000 for the first year. Right now, it's 150 for five years, and then is it 75% or 50%, and then 25% from there. So they were going to up it, they're looking at, the bill will cost for $2,000 per student for the first year, and then it would cliff down to 150 after that for the next four years. Another one was $25,000 for any type of feasibility study that you're doing. Another one would match the mill rates, level them out, so you weren't being, so they were, you weren't, one district wasn't being screwed out the other. That did not affect us a whole lot, but it was there. And then another one was about whole-grade sharing, $500 per student for every year that, or for the first five years. So it was a very good experience. I think we answered a lot of questions. I think it was well worthwhile going, because they hear, they hear from Milwaukee and Madison schools, and you're talking K-8 districts. They don't, they don't hear from districts way up north. And I think it was very good to understand what rural communities are all about and how, what the times we are going through. And we're doing everything to work together to be as efficient, but still offer opportunities for our students. So just a great experience. Lot of, lot of, lot of committee members came up afterwards and talked to us, and it was very positive. Okay, last thing I got. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards, Region Five Service Awards to board public, to board members that have demonstrated a high level of commitment to Wisconsin public students by participating in the Wisconsin Association of School Boards' professional development opportunities. So went to Region Five, Tom and I went to Region Five meeting. We have two board members I would like to congratulate that are made Level One and Level Two. So I would like to congratulate Dave Klinsman on Level Two.
Could everybody in the audience please stand up?
Congratulations.
Should we take a picture?
We will afterwards. And then Level One, Derek Wire. So what it is, is, so they've been on the board, but different levels, different things that, activities and opportunities that they are doing on the board. So congratulations to you guys. That is all I have. Thank you.
Set meeting dates. Meeting building grounds.
Yep, I talked to Brad Simonson today. Brad Graffender is off next week. Alright, so Brad Simonson and I and Brad Graffender talked about fourth or fifth. 7:00 AM. We talked about third, but the third is going to be a lot that morning, so.
Fourth, fourth at 7:00 AM, Thursday?
Are you going to be able to be there, Mr. Litner?
I'll be there.
Procedure.
Or I'll zoom.
December 4th, 7:00 AM. And December 10th, we got the joint meeting. And then it should, full board should be the 17th, correct?
Can I request a curriculum committee meeting, please?
Before the December meeting?
Um, yeah, probably. Just because I have to meet with Greenwood in January to go over the course and book.
Do you guys know who's on curriculum? I don't know right off the bat.
Crystal, Nikki, Matt. Do you want to meet before the joint meeting? So I got a nine. Is there anything that will come out of, because you got, you met with the?
Yeah, we met, and that's kind of our timeline. They're going to get their things together, they have to get them approved at their December board meeting, so we just have to get ours approved. So we can update the course handbook and then share it together, and then when kids register in January, it'll be set. It doesn't matter.
What day of the week is the eighth works for Nikki Crystal?
It's happening during the day. Do you want the teachers there for us?
No, it's just us and Ms. McSoray will be there, just.
Tuesday to nine?
What time?
Morning or?
I hope so.
You guys want to go right after school? Does that, right after?
Yeah, I don't have a game.
Can I zoom in to that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Are you going to have anything for new?
Yeah, we have already.
Okay, alright, so that would be that day.
Yeah.
Then you're ahead of the game, alright, good.
So December 9th, 3:30?
Yeah, that should be good, thank you.
If I can be here with personnel, I will, but if I can't for some reason, I'll zoom in, I'll let you know.
Travis, do we need calls for a technology meeting in December?
No.
Do we need anything?
No.
Okay, will you let us know when you do need something?
You don't want a whole page this time? Yeah, we're good now.
Okay, alright, thank you. Just wondering if technology would, if she would run that plan on the technology side of it, the library plan?
I know the state split them apart super recently, so I'd have to look, but.
Alright, well, I'll work on and put them back together. Alright, and we can talk about that, okay?
We're good on that?
December 10th, do you think so for the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
December 1st for Grant? December's 3rd, we're meeting with Joe and Jamie to go over the joint board agenda, and then Myron is coming in to show us what they're going to talk about on the temp. So if that's just Chris and I.
That's just Chris and you, that's not the board.
That's 7:30?
Yeah.
Alright, questions and clarification from nobody in the audience? We are not, are we all making the board?
Nope. No need to, anyone else?
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Kirk makes a motion, second by Nikki, all those in favor? We are a...